There's any presentation necessarily that anyone wants to give or just a?
Well, the posture of the item is it's on tonight as agenda item eighteen. It's on for second reading, continued from April twenty first and that I believe was also continued from, or it was first heard at first reading prior to that.
Right.
So, the issue is whether or not you will advance the ordinance from here as is, or whether you will make any modifications to it. To the extent you do make modifications, there were several requests for information. There were a couple of pieces of information submitted both by staff and council and interested parties, otherwise interested parties. And this had to do with calculation methodologies based on actual usage at about half a dozen or so similarly sized properties around the city. Lewis Meyer, principal at SGM and author of the study is present to answer any technical questions tonight. Although Dave Betley is present, we're not going to put him on the spot. Andrew McGregor, we might put him on the spot, but just kidding. And other than that, I think, I think you're all familiar with the issue. So Mayor, I guess I would suggest to turn it over to you to present the calculations that you submitted. And for the record, there are two, I believe, two additions of this. What you just submitted tonight is revised from what we had in the packet earlier.
Right. All right, there was some errors in the original spreadsheet, which was fairly hastily put together, but it didn't really change the final results. You know, I guess the general philosophy is worth discussing first. I know that our prior policy was, okay, we're going to define one EQR as, I believe we calculated it as four hundred and nine, our current policy, I should say, is four hundred and ninety gallons per day per EQR. And our proposed policy, at least on a per, on a gallon per day basis, is three hundred and fifty gallons per day. Then in the, I don't want to speak for Lewis, but in the SGM study, I think it was three hundred and fifty gallons per day and then a peaking factor of two point five, I believe. So, you know, somewhere around eight hundred, whatever that works out, twenty-five raised seventy-five, whatever the number is, per day. And it's the, I guess, my contention that an EQR is not as tied to, I don't want to say reality, but it is, it is an estimation. And that's really what it is, you know, I mean, we could all have exactly the same houses, exactly the same yard, and we're going to use different amounts of water. So that's just the nature of the situation. So what my attempt is to do is to look at it from an, you know, we're specifically looking at multifamily here, but I think it could apply to smaller single family as well. Now, look at what have our actual, our actual usages, what have they been? And so this, the original data, which by the way, I do have, this is just the summary part of the spreadsheet, I do have copies of kind of the original data, if any of you want to look at it. This is the data that was provided by.
Yeah, I'll let you keep that.
Yeah.
Just for the record.
I think Robin Millier put this together, which is the actual meter reading data for on an annual basis for one, two, three, four, five, six different properties around town that are multifamily properties. And we have, what this shows in general is that there's a wide range of usages on that, on those properties. Kind of at the low end, we have, you know, Glenwood Green, which is in one year using at, on a, on a per bedroom basis, an average of forty-four gallons per bedroom, if you look at it on a per unit basis.
I mean, I wonder if there's any correlation.
It was seventy-seven, or sixty per drawing there. What's that?
Just wondering if there's any correlation between updated fixtures and things like that.
I would anticipate a newer property is going to use less water on average than an older property with the, you know, the newer coming fixtures and that kind of thing. I think, I think also we're seeing a trend where newer, these numbers do include outside irrigation on various properties. At least that's what I was led to believe. And so again, I think some newer properties actually have less irrigated space outside than perhaps older properties do. Matchbook is the highest use, and it had a maximum usage of three hundred and forty-four gallons per unit per day. So you've got a range from sixty-one gallons per unit to a maximum of three hundred and forty-four. What I did try looking at here was, you know, we, the information we received was on each property was how many units there were, how many one, two, or three bedroom units there were, how big the one, two, and three bedroom units were. So we could then look at it, okay, how much water is used per bedroom, how much water is used per square foot? And so, you know, those are the, the numbers on the far right over there. And, you know, if we look at the overall, you know, sum of all the six properties, we have a minimum water usage per bedroom of forty-four gallons per bedroom and a maximum of one hundred and nineteen gallons per bedroom over the whole, you know, overall six properties on all four or five years, four years, I guess, of data that we received. And then it works out to an average use per square foot, like a minimum of point oh eight and a maximum of point three three. So, you know, my contention is that our, our EQR schedule should probably, you know, it probably should be above average, it shouldn't necessarily be at the maximum. And my argument for that is that, you know, the maximum on one property, the maxims aren't going to always occur at the same time. Outside irrigation is, is the exception to that. But here we're really talking units. And it's going to be, you know, I would love to see the actual annual data on a month-to-month basis, and I, you know, we don't have that. And see, you know, when, when are the, you know, peak months, when are the lower months? And other than, you know, when you exclude outside irrigation, I suspect that it's fairly random would be my guess on that.
Should be.
Yeah. And so my, my suggestion is that we look at a rate that is, again, above the average, but perhaps somewhere below the maximum, and we're going to then account for, I think, any, you know, what we're talking about is what do we apply to new units, not necessarily what do we apply to a project that was built thirty years ago? And so, you know, for a, you know, my suggestion is that we apply an EQR rate of point two five EQR's per bedroom. And that, if you look at that, that equates to an average daily water usage per bedroom of eighty-seven point five gallons. And if you go down that second to the last column, that is greater than the maximum on Glenwood Green. It's less than the, you know, it's greater than the average on Matchbook, but less than the maximum. It's greater than the maximum on Holiday House. And on Manor One, it is actually less than the average there. On Manor Two, it is also slightly less, I mean, less than the minimum there. But then on Twenty-third Street Apartments, it's again real close to the maximum that we see. So we're, we're exceeding, you know, the maximum on one, two, three of these properties effectively with that rate. And then if we went with a point oh six gallons, or point oh six EQR's per one hundred square feet, again, we look down that list on the last column, and that exceeds, which equates to an average daily water usage per square foot of point two one gallons per square foot. That again exceeds Glenwood Green, Holiday House, that exceeds Manor One, Manor Two. And so it's only less than the maximums on Twenty-third Street and Matchbook, so.
Okay, can I stop you there? The, the two formulas that you just articulated are point two five EQR's per bedroom and point oh six EQR's per one hundred square feet.
Right, whichever is greater. And I would, I would also argue that that should apply exclusive of outside irrigation to single family homes. If they, someone's building a six hundred square foot single family home, and they have hypothetically zero outside irrigation, why should they be charged a full EQR, which is what our code would propose? And so, you know, the argument here is we're trying to incentivize, again, housing and attainable workforce type housing, and smaller units tend to be more attainable for workforce. So I don't think, if someone's building a six hundred square foot, one bedroom apartment versus a six hundred square foot, one bedroom, single family house, neither of them have any outside irrigation hypothetically, why should they be charged different EQR rates? And that's what we're currently proposing.
So how would you take into consideration the outside irrigation?
Outside irrigation would apply based on the, the code, which says that it's, I can't remember, it's, I don't have it up here, but.
Okay, yeah, no, that's, that's fine, just wanted to clarify.
Well, I agree with you. First of all, I thank you for your analysis, it was thorough, complete, and it seems fair and reasonable, and I appreciate that. And I, I'll say I support this concept in general. I see you've, I see there's the current language in Exhibit A, and then I guess the proposed language with the reductions that kind of mirror what's going on here on the spreadsheet. I'll support the changes to multifamily residential units. Any changes to the single family, I don't support yet because there's not any control over what people do with their, with their property as far as irrigating and all that, so we just leave that alone for now.
Yeah.
We could continue to, to think about it and look at it and study and come up, maybe there are some clever things we can do there, but right now I'm not very supportive of changes in that part of the deal. But I, I do appreciate honestly all the work you've done here, and I think it's really, I took a hard look at it, and it did change my opinion on that, so I appreciate that very much.
Yeah, the way, the way we currently apply irrigation EQR's to a single family is, a single family is one EQR regardless, well, it says, single family home, three bedrooms, two bathrooms, one kitchen, you know, greater than thirty-five hundred square feet. So we kind of leave out, well, what is it, if you have a one bedroom, six hundred square foot, single family home, how do you get charged? And so I guess I would have that question, I think that needs to be clarified. But then it talks about thirty-five hundred square feet, so that's included in your one EQR. But then if you have additional irrigated space, it goes down to number seven, which is point one EQR for two thousand square feet of landscaped area. And it says greater than four thousand square feet, which probably ought to be thirty-five hundred based on the, the single family code, so.
Well, if you're going to build a tiny home, what lots in Glenwood Springs would support such a concept?
Well, right now, perhaps not, but we could, we could perhaps.
So maybe we tie that to some sort of change in minimum lot size or whatever our goals are, I don't know, but something like that. Might be something to look at. I wouldn't apply it to if somebody owns a acre acre lot, they build a six hundred square foot house, and then they, you know, have a quarter EQR for that, and then two years later they apply for expansion and.
And then they'd be charged for more EQR's.
You know, anecdotally, Mike and I live in a neighborhood that's really the, the old model of, of development because there were no alleys, so that gave us extra big yards in the back, lots of grass. And just, just from my own experience on my street, Joe and I zero escaped, we cut our usage to a hundred gallons a day. My neighbor up the street uses about twelve thousand gallons a month in irrigation season, same size lot, but he has grass. And he's very particular, he likes his, and that's fine, but I'm just saying, you know, there are things that we need to start looking at as we move forward that are strategies that developers and builders can use to help mitigate the, the amount of EQR that's going to happen to a, to a residential building. And that's certainly one of the things that can be done is to incorporate at least a partial zero escaping scheme, because it really makes a huge difference.
To incentivize that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and even, you know, even in talking about the landscaping, you know, you can put Kentucky bluegrass in, you're going to be using one level of water application on, say you have a five thousand square feet of irrigated space, and it's all Kentucky bluegrass, and you can put pristine and green all summer long, you'll be using a certain amount of water. There's other types of, and I'm not enough of a landscape architect to know what they are, but I think some best use are some other types of, of grasses that are, you know, used, you know, a fraction of the water that you're Kentucky bluegrass would use. And so I think, yes, I, I agree that, you know, just, just like with these, you know, what we saw here, one size doesn't really fit all, and the same thing with irrigation. You can have, two people can have five thousand square feet of irrigated space and use a completely different amount of water. So we're just trying to come up with an estimate of what, you know, what should it be based on, you know, what is our average water usage out there? And if we exceed the average, then we're, you know, we're not hurting our size, I guess. And then the other place to catch that is, okay, so we, we charge a six hundred square foot, one bedroom apartment, a certain number of EQR, point two five EQR's or whatever, and they end up using fifty thousand gallons of water in a month. Well, then our, our water usage rates, which is not really on the table today, but I do think should be, is, is the way to catch that, because then, you know, you can get people that are completely wasting water. And it should be, in my opinion, kind of on these exponential curves. You know, if you're down here in the normal range, you know.
Yeah, tiered water usage.
Yeah, you're, 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 you're going to pay a fairly reasonable rate, but if you're up there in the.
There are people in town who still irrigate their lawns as though they were raising potatoes.
Yeah.
Two things quickly, Mr. Mayor, I want to make sure what we're doing. In Exhibit A, what you were proposing is at, under residential classifications, which is Exhibit A, page one, residential A three, multifamily residential units, which were broken up for this hearing into one thousand square feet, fifteen hundred square feet, to effectively eliminate all of that language in favor of your formula, the greater of point two five EQR's per bedroom or point zero six EQR's per one hundred square feet.
That is my suggestion.
And that the, based on the support in the work session, that has no opposition that I'm aware of. You also wanted to extend that to single family homes, and there was not unanimous support for that. I just wanted to make sure that when we make, you know, when you do the work on this tonight in a few hours, we can go straight there. I also wanted to give, if you would please, Mr. Meyer, a chance to make any sort of record or answer any questions that you might have of him.
Okay.
I just, you know, I don't know if I could just let the developers drive, if we have smaller homes, small lot sizes, maybe you could like drive some of these changes in the future to single family. I just, you know, I haven't given it much thought and really not prepared to support that at this point. I'm not against in concept, but I'd like to hear some other clever ideas from folks. I'd like to be open to that going forward. Also know, you know, where Kathy and I live, I don't know how much water Kathy uses, so, but I know we use way too much water to water the desert in West Glenwood. And I think it's a very different environment than, say, South Glenwood, you're in the shadow a lot, you don't have that same issue, so there's a way to deal with that.
All right, I think, again, you know, we've got to look at the narrative across town, and I think the way to, in my opinion, that, that's addressed under our actual usages, which I do think we need to revisit myself. Not that I want to charge you guys.
Not too soon, please.
Yeah, I thought I want to charge you guys more water necessarily, but, you know, I do think that there's some, some inequities in our current usage fees.
I would agree.
Yeah, I mean, it's insane how much water we use.
You, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think at the outset of this, you articulated a concern about replacement of infrastructure. And to the extent that that plays into this whole discussion, you know, one of the things Glenwood has never had to worry about is having enough water, but that may not always be the case. And so it's really, I, I have a certain amount of nervousness around this whole thing, because if, if we were to face a protracted period of time when we didn't have adequate snowfall, then we may be facing having to invest in building a dam on the flat tops to build the reservoir at Grizzle Creek. And that's going to be a huge undertaking and a very expensive one. And so I have some trepidation about being too lax on this and maybe giving away the future in terms of our ability to, to tackle a problem that could arise that we don't foresee it at this point. But it's, it's a very real issue now, was, I mean, I look at Alberta and it's like, wait a minute, that could happen here.
Right, right, and, and I, I appreciate those, those thoughts, and I don't disagree. My, my overall contention here, I guess, is that by actually reducing our EQR rates, we are encouraging, you know, we, we, using the kind of absurd example of, okay, let's say we, we raise our, our, our tariff, our improvement fee to fifty thousand dollars per EQR, just to be absurd, and, you know, what we're going to, fifty thousand dollars times zero is still zero. Whereas if we start getting some of these users coming in, A, we're getting the tariffs, B, we're also getting the long-term user fees. And that's where I think the solution to that issue lies entirely, in my opinion, and not entirely, but mostly, in my opinion, is, is that we have to start looking at the capitalization of our system within the user fees, I think. And that applies both for wastewater and water. And the more users we get on, for example, if we could get a hundred additional EQR's on our sewer plant out there, that would, on average, amount to about an extra hundred thousand dollars a year of user fees coming into the sewer fund, which would help reduce our subsidy that we're currently paying on that wastewater plant. So that, that's my.
By the same token, you touched on it briefly, but one of the discussions, not, maybe not this council, but a future council not too far in the future is going to have to have is what we charge for treated water.
Yeah.
So. You raising tackle the multifamily deal that I had to be good, I think that's where this issue, the greater percentage of cost, well, that could be reduced. The other multifamily issues, then, this ever increasing, single family kind of cost structure, it seems to be, as, as value is expanding, you know, it grows higher and higher, this becomes a smaller market, so.
I, I guess I would actually like to ask Andrew a question. Hypothetically, let's say someone came in with a six hundred square foot, one bedroom, single family home. I don't know if you, you're looking at our second Exhibit A, proposed Exhibit A here, but how, how would we calculate what that is? Right now, what it says is, single family homes, three bedrooms, two bathrooms, one kitchen, no greater than thirty-five hundred square feet of irrigated lawn and garden, watered by sprinklers. So, you know, I'm just curious, when we're under that, is it, is it up to that amount? Is that, I mean, basically, if I'm building my six hundred square foot, one bedroom home, I'm paying one EQR? Is that effectively the way you would interpret this?
That's how we would do it, too.
And Andrew, there really isn't currently any, any zoning within the city that would allow for the, the tiny homes or the, you know, the, I mean, as far as little, smaller lots, smaller.
Yeah, I mean, the minimum lot size is not a function of the home size, so you're, regardless of the size, you're at three thousand or six thousand square feet, you know, for an example, a town size lot, whether five or six thousand or six thousand anywhere outside the town size.
Typically, it's not economically wise to build a tiny house on a lot that large.
Right, usually the ratio of the value of the home and the value of the land are, are going to be different.
Yeah.
But, you know, going forward, very much, you know, I think you're, you're right, that's very likely to be a scenario in the future where we have two or three thousand square foot lots.
Well, and like in our neighborhood, if a guy was really serious about this, in our backyards, we could build three or four six hundred square foot homes and, and just approach the far ratio and have affordable housing pop up out of the ground. So there, there are lots of strategies that I can envision that would maybe work, and I don't necessarily want to be a landlord, but it's a, you know, it's a way that individuals could help with this issue as well, so.
And unfortunately, we have two minutes or one minute to finish this work session. Lewis, do you want to say something in two minutes?
Sure, I'll try to be brief. Good evening. I'll start with some broad ideas and you have to answer any questions you may have and maybe get down to some very specific ideas or based on this table. First, I acknowledge what Mike said, that it's very difficult to set an EQR schedule that is applicable to everyone, because everyone does things differently. However, they're not meant to do that. They're meant to cover what could be the maximum impact on your system. If you back up to the analysis we did, we looked at the, the value of your system, your wholesale infrastructure, which is based upon that maximum day demand, is based upon the peak demand in the summertime when everybody's using water, because you don't want your water tanks to fall and the water plant has to deliver that much water. So that's what it's based upon. I did want to address Stephen's comments. One of the things the water industry is wrestling with is paying the true cost of water, and they're finding that people are not assessing the true cost of water. In fact, in the Colorado Water Plan, that was one of the leading issues with water providers is, and most communities like you are, are going to struggle in the future with paying for all the buried infrastructure and other infrastructure that they have if you're not funding a hundred percent of your depreciation, if you're not funding your depreciation. So that's going to be a day of reckoning in the future. As far as this table, again, I think the big difference probably, what your calculations show in mine, is that we base it on the maximum day demand. This doesn't reflect the maximum day demand, this reflects kind of a thirty day average. And in fact, when you look at a maximum day demand, it really supports the numbers, which were point five and point six five and point seven five. I'm concerned that when you couple that with a multifamily complex that also gets, say, fifty percent reduction because they might use raw water, you're really, you're down to the bone of what the, the issue is. I think I remember my chat.
I do have one quick question for you. My opinion on that fifty percent reduction is that's only on the irrigation related water, is that?
No, I think the way it's written, Mike, is that it was based upon a fifty percent reduction.
Of the overall.
But it was based upon the original numbers here, not, not the, so I think if you, if you further take a reduction of what is in the organs. you further take a reduction of what is in the ordinance presently, you're really lowering those to a very low level.
All right, well, unfortunately, we are probably going to have to continue this discussion when the ordinance comes out tonight and see if we can get somewhere.